Roll call, Mr. Gardner? Or roll card? Okay, you'll do it, yes. Please call the roll, please.
John Spring.
Here.
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Mitzi Barker.
Here.
Greg Strick.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Tyler Robinson and Brian Looney have been excused, thank you.
Any changes to the minutes? If not, I'd maintain a motion to approve. Mitzi moves and Jared seconds. We -- no objections, minutes are approved. Disclosures? Mr. Gardner?
None.
Danielle?
I was not present at the December 4 meeting, and so I will not be able to vote regarding to case number 2017-0095 or 2017-0131 on the consent agenda, but I will be participating on the last consent agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Strick?
None.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have none. Okay, first item, special order of business is the 2018 Planning Department Work Program. Mr. Director?
Thank you Chairman Spring and Commissioner, it's great to be here. My name's Hal Hart. I'm the Planning Director for the City and Municipality of Anchorage. Before you is some thoughts that we put together working with various members of our team and the administration. The basic idea is laid out in the probably first couple of pages. We have three divisions. Most of the time, you don't see one. Not everybody here sees what's going on in the Transportation Division. Mr. Spring has lots of experience there. But one of the themes this year is to make sure that transportation and land use are consistent with one another and the recently adopted land use plan. That's certainly a theme. Reaching out, another theme is from current planning and from the rest of the Development Services Team and Engineering Team is how do we treat development when it comes through? And are we doing the best job we can do in Anchorage, or can we do better? So, a study was commissioned called the Bendin' Adams Study, looking at those kind of things. And it came up with a series of recommendations. So, also incorporated into this year's work program, you'll see aspects where we're trying to coordinate a lot better in terms of taking a project through from beginning to end and making sure that it's not stumbling anywhere in that process, that it isn't being held up because someone's on vacation or somebody's not there, that you have a go-to person. It's kind of moving that process as it goes through. We're -- even though we're in a recession, we're still doing about $400 to $400-plus million worth of development each year. But imagine when times are going to be good and there's going to be long lines again. And we want a system, we want a permit system that is able to rise to that challenge and for us to know where those permits are in the system. So, you know, that's a larger conversation than even the Planning Department, basically, because there are other permitting systems that are going on. But we're part of that. And the role of the Planning Directors is a very important role in that overall process, because you're trying to get from something on paper, permissions, to get that developed and implement your comprehensive plan. And you're also trying to implement your comprehensive plan going through Title 21. So, all those things do come together at some point in the process. And people are doing those reviews at the front counter, but I'm not necessarily their boss. So, it's kind of interesting. So, they're following Title 21, but the Planning Director isn't in charge of that team that's interpreting the rules of the game that implement your comprehensive plan. So, it's an interesting place. We're trying to improve on the existing system, so that's another theme. Then the third and more traditional theme for this is really, we've just adopted a land use plan. What are we going to do? We have, we don't have a lot of additional people. In fact, we took a cut this year. So, we're three positions down. And as a result of that, we have to be very judicious on where we want to spend our time and the kind of things that we want to get a good bang for the buck out of. And so, that's going to be really important as well. So, we've laid out, then, the final thing is the work program efforts for 2018. We have current planning activities that are laid out and beginning on page four of the handout. And at this point, I will let our team jump in if they want to talk about any of those items. Carol is the manager. I should have introduced her before. Carol is our manager long range. And so, she's part of the brain trust trying to figure out what's, when we move that land use plan forward, what are the key things we should be working on and getting the biggest bang for the buck? So, number one, again, was implementing Title 21 daily, which is a huge priority, making sure we're getting it right and that people are getting the right answers. Tomorrow night, they may change part of Title 21, so then we have to train everybody to make sure we're getting consistent answers. The permit process improvement is ongoing all the time. Marijuana permit, you know, one thing I'll say is I asked a marijuana business owner, "How many people will you employ with that 5,000-square-foot growing operation back there?" And they will employ 15 new folks in town at a rate higher than what Starbucks pays. So, they are creating an employment situation, and it's just kind of good to know what's going on with marijuana and how we're implementing it. So, one of the big strategies on page five is working, assisting the Real Estate Department in housing development and permit processing. So, one of the big strategies that's come out this year is, hey, how can we kickstart housing? How do you kickstart housing? One of the key things you have is look at what the city already owns and look and see if that could be converted to development, especially when it's never paid taxes before. So, we've never reaped the benefit as a community from some property, and now, if we redevelop it, it could. And so, a mixed-use development where something may not have ever produced taxes since we've been a city is an opportunity to do those kinds of things. So, as we look at that opportunity for housing, workforce, corridor redevelopment, we try and look at all the win-wins in that process, and we're working with the Real Estate Department to redevelop some of those sites for housing, for commercial uses, and trying not to blow up our transportation corridors in the process of doing that. And so, some of those pieces will come to you in the year or two ahead. Mentioned the Bendin' Adams and participate and lead in housing development priorities. Dave Whitfield is working that every day. And he's part of those discussions. So, he's the acting current Planning Manager, and he was unable to be here tonight because he's speaking to a neighborhood. So, he's out there tonight doing his thing. And then, next page, on page six, deliver high-quality customer service. Again, we've mentioned that, so I won't say much more about that. Here's one that's on the list. Improve utility coordination among utility providers consistent with Title 21. One of the issues we have on implementation is how do we get it underground? How do you get the utilities underground? The utilities don't agree to work together. So, what's then the city's role to encourage them to work together? It's an important, ongoing issue. But I would expand that as well to say, if we want to encourage new development, are there ways that we can incentivize the placement of utilities in for future development? And so, really working what a lot of other cities have done, and that is be really strategic on their utility investments and consistent with our plan, consistent with that land use plan that you looked at where we talked about centers and corridors. And so, you know, if we pick one of those corridors for utilities to be upgraded, that's a great opportunity to do a lot of other strategic work. The other thing that happened this year is that we've changed, fundamentally changed, our transit system. So, the transit system has gone from an all-over, spread-out model to a frequency-based model on the same corridors. So, that's something else to think about when we talk about utilities and transit. Where do all those lines converge? And we can get a big bang for our buck in some of the town centers that you've looked at and agreed to and recommended and were adopted. Finally, page seven, track permitting for housing. So, there should always be a feedback loop to you guys and to the public. Where has growth gone? Where are the housing going? Where are all the multifamily housing going? Where's the affordable housing going? So, understanding geographically based where that new housing is going on an annual basis would be a good thing. And working to get space in our GIS team to -- yes?
Along those lines, it might be interesting to know how things are fitting according to our land use map updates that we've done, such as how are city centers growing? And are the updates that we did to the land use map actually encouraging development in those city centers? And looking in, are there further things we can do either to increase the residences in the areas we're looking for? And then also the businesses as well? So, I really like the idea of getting feedback on the GIS data surrounding that.
And so, the idea would then be whenever the two groups get back together, we'd have a report. How well have we done? Where you have the GIS, the geographic data there for you to assess a couple of weeks ahead of time, and then give us your feedback at that point. And so, we haven't done that. I really want to set that up so that that comes to you. And it should be available, you know, at least quarterly. That would be a goal. Okay. Moving on, I'm almost done. Apologize for the long delay there. Let's go to page eight. Land use plan 2040. And this is what I want Carol to talk about. Go ahead, Carol.
So, what you have before you was prepared December 1st. And so, all the projects listed here assumed that my group would have a staffing of 7.7 people. And so, we know that with the budget that's been adopted by the Assembly that we're down of 2 people in my group. So, we have looked at all these projects listed here, and we find that for the 2040 land use plan implementation, the three that we want to tackle for 2018 that we feel has the biggest bang is the Central Spinnard reinvestment focus area, the South C Street targeted area rezone, as well as the downtown code conversion. Right now, if you're in downtown, you're straddling the old code and trying to pick out how does that mesh with what is in the new code as well. And so, we feel like if we really want to help our downtown move forward, we need to make the conversion, put it all under new code, and help spur redevelopment there. So, out of the 2040, those would be the three top priorities that we would be working on in the plan, in our section. And then, the other ones is continuing to build on the Spinnard Corridor Plan that we expect will be coming to you sometime by this spring for your public review and recommendation. But there's been a lot of momentum building in that Spinnard Plan that we want to build on. There's interested property owners that want to reinvest in that area. The community there is highly interested and supportive of redevelopment. And so, there's a lot of great energy and momentum that we want to build on through what we identified earlier as the Central Spinnard RFA. Because there's some roads in there that because of the nature of them have really hamstrung redevelopment. And so, we want to go in there and see if there's opportunities to muster how we bond for projects, how, whether it's a revenue bond through ACDA to help kind of spur and lead maybe some of that off-site improvement that is holding back those projects. Historic preservation, we are getting very close to having a public review draft out on the street. We're looking at February to release that. And that will, as it moves forward, will capture for the first time a muni-wide historic preservation plan. We heard when we brought through, for you all, the four neighborhoods plan, that Eagle River says, "Why did you guys leave us out?" And Gerwood said the same thing. So, this plan will capture those two areas as well as all the other areas that were not covered by the four neighborhood plan. And then, we also staff three ongoing commissions, Geotech, Historic Preservation, as well as Watershed, which has been working with FEED and our Watershed Management on a storm, on a stream corridor that will also be coming to you all soon as an amendment to Title 21. And then, working on some mayor's resiliency initiatives as well as reviewing and commenting on ongoing permit and project review. So, the work is certainly all still there, but we knew that there was just no way we could tackle all of the 2040 listed there. But we wanted to pick off three that we felt could really have a major impact.
If I may, through the chair, I'd like to make one comment on what she said, and that those two, two of those committees will probably not get the same level of service from staff that they've received in the past. So, the Historic Preservation Committee, we will keep the minutes and try and do what we can. But with fewer staff, it's very unlikely for us to keep the same momentum going. But we want to get that plan done. Things will turn around, probably, we hope, at the end of 2018, 2019, and go in a different direction. But for now, we're trying to focus our resources on those three objectives in long range.
I have any questions for Carol? I have a couple of questions regarding the timeline for the Central Spinnard RFA. And we talked about this during the CIP process. And I think it also relates to Chugash Way reconstruction study. We were hoping, I think, at least I was hoping, that there'd be something ready for the next CIP round so that we could start focusing the CIP a little bit more intensely in certain areas to get kind of some, you know, really exciting projects going that would raise, you know, interest in the community. So, what do you think the timeline would be? It doesn't seem like there's really enough time to really complete a Central Spinnard RFA before the CIP, is there?
We are going to try and work with Public, Humanee to see what we can put in there as a placeholder for a CIP, whether it's a reconnaissance study or, that I think would be the first step. Because until we really have money to do that type of a study, we don't know exactly how wide should the right-of-way be on Chugash. We want a daylight fish creek there as well. So, these are questions that we've heard support for by the community. But we need, we need to do some initial analysis before we can name a dollar amount to fix the roadway.
So, you foresee something in the CIP to do some preliminary reconnaissance studies?
Yeah.
Initially for the next year?
Yes.
Are these studies going to be done in-house? Or are they professional services? I see there's some professional services here, $150,000. What's that to be used for?
That's the kind of our guest estimate for reconnaissance study, and it would be for consultant services.
Okay. So, what about the actual Central Spinnard RFA would be a separate study, right? I mean, like a neighborhood, like a neighborhood study or something?
It could be a neighborhood, small area study, or it could be a master plan. We are reviewing what other cities who have taken on similar project to see how they go about it. Because we want, we don't want to have a long, extensive study. We know that there are some infrastructure issues that have been holding back redevelopment there. So, maybe it can all be answered through reconnaissance study.
I think that's a good start. I think that's a good priority. Any other? You want to continue?
Sure. So, that's it with the land use plan under 2040 land use plan. Spinnard Corridor, we mentioned that. Historic Preservation, mentioned that. So, we're really done with page eight. Page nine, ongoing staffing commissions, we mentioned that. We've actually got people in that right now. That's who we're moving around, so you can see. The Mountain View Corridor project is a food resiliency project. One of the big issues here in town is only 5% of the food is grown in Alaska, and so, we're very dependent upon the Lower 48. So, we have, it reminds me, I need to make those phone calls almost weekly. We have two firms that wanted to come in earlier in the year and invest in property and build basically urban farms. So, they have very different approaches. One approach is on top of things, and the other approach was inside big warehouse spaces or underutilized buildings. So, they're both in Montreal or back east or both of those places. And so, I'll keep you up to date on where those are going. There are plenty of smaller neighborhood-level efforts and smaller entrepreneurs that also would like to be in the food business, from everything from food truck folks to people that want to serve or have fresh green companies, those kinds of things as well.
I'm sorry, Mitzi, did you have a question about this or a previous one?
Okay. So, I just wanted to say that's part of the resiliency effort. Then, current and long range work together to review permits as well. So, something you don't always see is when the two teams get together and say, "Hey, what is, what was the idea behind a certain planning concept that came up? And are we implementing it correctly?" And that is an ongoing discussion behind the scenes that you see. But we've put that in there, and it's a team effort. And I try to make sure that disagreements are mediated internally, never slow up a permit, and that we're always being consistent. So, coordinate with neighborhood planning efforts as time allows. One of the things we have not done as much as I would like, and that's reach out into the neighborhoods. There's at least a couple of efforts going on. South Edition is coming up with a planning effort. And I think this year, we'll probably see something in 2018 from South Edition. Haven't been to one of their meetings for a couple of months. They took the Christmas breaks off, but I think they're getting back to it. There'll be two meetings where they're discussing it in January alone. So, it's ongoing, and eventually, they'll come to us, and we'll have to look at the plan as it comes forward and make comments back to the neighborhood as to consistency with all the other plans and Title 21 and et cetera, et cetera. So, that's an ongoing issue. Going to page 10. Again, these are the transportation, AMAS activities is given to me from AMAS. But we had a very interesting meeting. And the, the meeting is always a balancing of interests when you're talking about transportation. There's DOT and the goals and objectives DOT wants to achieve versus the, perhaps, the goals and objectives that we want to achieve in the land use plan and the balancing of those objectives. And it's a larger discussion than I would do right here. But suffice it to say, not all roads can be all things to all people. And I think once, you know, an arterial serves, you know, larger arterials serve to move people, but sometimes, they become town centers too. And so, how do you mitigate those two different objectives and move that forward? So, that discussion was at the AMAS Subcommittee last week, and it was very, it was just very interesting to watch the discussion and the changing of potential goals and objectives and what that means for the year ahead. So, finally, I'm going to move on. We'll be done. Page 11, I think, is our assumptions, FTE assumptions. So, Carol, do you want to talk about those? Are those the assumptions that are no longer valid? Or have already, or are those? I think we're okay there? We're okay, okay. All right. We'll take any questions you have.
Mitzi?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. And before I kind of go crazy with this, what is the distribution of this document? Is this something, just an internal work plan that you use in your department? Where else does it go?
Yeah. So, the key distribution of this work program is going to be up to my boss, and that's Chris Shute. And his span is wide under the current system. So, he can look at most of the items that are in Development Services, in Community Development, in Planning. And then, we coordinate with Public Works, Engineering, Traffic. And AMAS, by the way, pays part of the traffic team, pays part of the funding for the traffic team, too. So, there's interrelationships that are all over the place. But generally, that's how we're coordinated. So, you kind of have two sides of the house looking at development.
That said?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I really endorse what you're, what you're, what you're working to do with greater integration, cross-disciplinary pollination. One thing I think you could do, since this will have some broader distribution, is in your mission statement, is to make the current planning division's mission statement mirror more closely the format of the long range. Something along the lines of current planning provides technical review and expertise to implement plans through land use regulation between Title 21, something like that, so that these are both very action-oriented.
I love that, because we didn't have a lot of time to start. But I think we need to work on that, and especially as we move forward. And I would grow that to the Development Services Team, which also is taking Title 21 and working directly across, you know, every day.
Yeah, because I think part of the challenge we have as planners, both special planners and commissioners, is to overcome the impression that we're gatekeepers and naysayers. And instead, we're really people who facilitate and help implement community vision.
I really like the term facilitate, because I think everybody's an investor in your community. And when we recognize that, oh, Mr. Strick is investing his money into our community, we're all on the same page at that point. And I think that's a really strong place to be.
So, if you don't mind, I'll go on.
Yeah.
If I get too nitpicky, shut me down, okay?
No, no, no.
I was looking on page four, under the very first, the primary efforts. I mean, so I expect implementing Title 21 daily, which is kind of passive. And isn't Title 21 really a tool to implement the comp plan? Shouldn't that be kind of flipped around? That we're implementing the comp plan daily through Title 21?
Yes.
Again, it's the same kind of theme I've got of, let's not be regulators and gatekeepers. I could go on and on. I'm glad to see that you have included a piece in there for certification. And I assume that also means certification maintenance for those that are already AICP.
So, this year, because of, partially because of the reduction in staffing, we've been, we've had this discussion with our boss, and they've said that they'll support getting that, getting training and also attendance to the Urban Land Institute stuff as well, which I found fascinating and really good.
It is rich.
As well as the planning efforts. So, if people were to get their AICP, then we know they have a certain body of knowledge. But I think also the ULI information is but I think also the ULI information is really current stuff. It's how people look at a pro forma, and the more we can understand what the person is faced with on the other side of the panel, or on the table, I think it's really helpful too.
Well, that's great, we've come a long ways in being able to provide these professional development, job enrichment opportunities for our staff, and I really, really glad to see that continue in there. So, I think that's enough.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep, I think that's it for us at this point. If you have other issues, you can bring them up at, at any time during the year. We'll be using this once it, once we think it's approved by city manager and Chris as what we measure our success from, and we will, I'm sure we'll have a lot of other requests, weekly, monthly, but we'll keep these foremost as we're working on our work program. And when we're in lean times, I will say, what do you want me to drop? Because this is what we've, you've asked us to do, so, and what, or what impact, they may ask me, what impact will that have on the delivery of something? So, we'll give that estimate as best we can.
I have a kind of procedural question for you.
Yeah.
Title 21 says, as part of the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the commission shall review and make recommendations to the mayor regarding the annual work program of the department. So, that seems to me that we need to make a, a motion to recommend the work plan to the mayor. Is that how you see it?
That's how I see it.
So, okay, I didn't see that in the report here, but anybody have a question regarding that? Okay. I have several question for staff, myself. I'd like to see, I think I would like to see the Benton, Benton Adams Report.
No problem.
Is, I suspect there's some things in there that probably are relevant to the work plan, that, you know, it's hard for me to evaluate how well the work plan addresses this report. I'm assuming the report gave some direction to changes in the department that you're trying to follow, but we can't really determine that without seeing the report. I think if the rest of the commission would like to see that, I think it'd be something we'd like to... What's that? Have we seen it? I haven't seen it, I don't, this is the first I heard of it. But I, I think we could probably make a motion without seeing it at this point, but it'd be good to have it for background. One, one other thing I have, and you have to bear with me, because it's a pet peeve of mine. And I'm glad Craig's not here, because he could probably get mad at me, but under transportation planning...
Yes.
The coordination, last page, page 11, says land use, PM and E, Vision Zero, staff as needed, daily, weekly, monthly, annually, one full-time equivalent. Is that, is that, that's actually one person, right? Or it could be divided up among various people, but totally, in total, it would equal one person's full-time job?
Right, really, it's, it's divided up among five plus Craig, and I think that's the way that it's currently done. So, there's a tiny percentage of their daily activity that's to do all that coordination outside of the planning world, to do anything else.
I, I'd like to ask the commission if anybody's ever seen anything from the transportation planning and its comments in a staff report. I haven't seen anything since I've been on this commission. Maybe once I did, I think, once I did. So, I don't know whether one, FTE, we don't see it in the transportation design study reports. There's never anything from the transportation planning on that. So, I think it's like, this is in here, and it's always been in here, I've seen it in every, you know, work plan forever, and, but it's not being done. We did get some comment, but we don't get written comments, we never get a written comment. Right. So, I, well, part of my finding, I think, when the motion will be that, either you take that out of there, or you do something, you know, you, you actually fulfill that part of the, the task, or just take it out.
I would prefer that you say, let's fulfill that part of, you know, staff them back to us and let us know how you're going to do that.
I'll be nicer in my finding, but...
It's not like Craig isn't here, but I think...
Well, I, I've, I've talked to Craig about it, so he knows how I feel about it. And what happened, what he tells me is that, well, we don't really have time to do it, we've got all these mandates from the AMATS, you know, the Metropolitan Planning Regulations, and we're busy doing everything else, and, so we don't have time to do it. Fine, if that's the case, then this should reflect that, then, it shouldn't show one full-time equivalent, because it's not, if that's, if that is what he tells you, and that's what we have to accept, then you need to take that out and not include it in there, because it doesn't, it's not happening.
I'm, just as you've brought that up, Mr. Chair, that I have just been thinking of four or five ways I could get them to come back and report to the PNZ, the Planning and Zoning Commission, about certain items like non-motorized plan. They could give an update of what they've, what they're hearing out in the community. Would that be a good use of their time?
Well, that's not really the point I'm making, I don't think. I'm, I'm referring to case reports, staff reports...
Just reviewing.
Re-zonings, conditional uses, design study reports, everything that...
Well, you can do that.
That we get here as a commission, not, although maybe other commissioners would want that type of report also, but that's not really the point I'm making.
Just on staff reports?
Yes, and, and other relevant, even plans, for instance. Let's take like a district plan. We've had a number of district plans in the past, and I don't want to beat this over the head, but we never get anything from planning, transportation planning on district plans either, so...
Good point.
That begs the question, one question, the FTE 7.5 at the very bottom on page 11, you said there's only five full-time employees, how, I don't understand, I don't think I understand FTE then.
So, we have five planners and a manager, and then they've hired a, they've, they've hired one admin person, because we've cut so many admin from our team. Their funding, by the way, it comes from the feds, federal funding.
Right, okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Yes, Mitzi?
I'm just wondering, now that I've realized that this commission has not had a chance to see that study, if it might be appropriate for us to have a chance to look at that before we take action and make a recommendation on this? Just so maybe we would have an opportunity to promote even more clearly some of the things that you're trying to accomplish here.
Sure.
Just a wondering.
Yeah, I, I would love to forward you the link to this, to the site. I think we can, I believe it is on the city's website, I think, but if not, we'll, we'll find a link for you.
Would it do you any harm if we postponed?
This has to go, I think, for... That's a good question, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I just think that this is going to be an ongoing conversation, that's what I want this to be. And that if you're not seeing something, great suggestions tonight, how to build a better, you know, implementation effort, so I take it all as great advice.
Okay, thanks. I'm not going to follow my sword over that one, having it available, definitely will add more grist to the conversation. Thank you.
So, Mitzi, do you want to make a motion to postpone? Okay. We're okay with doing it, everybody agree with that? Okay. Someone want to make a motion regarding the recommendation to the mayor? I, I think we need to make some type of motion so that we can fulfill our duties as the Planning and Zoning Commission according to Title 21, unless you disagree. Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion so that, no? Yes, pass her. I would like to make a finding, if I may, myself, just that we appreciate the fact that we've got the work plan and had a chance to review it, and are able to fulfill our, our responsibilities as a Planning and Zoning Commission under Title 21.
So, I'll add a, add a finding that the, the work plan proposes a coordinated, consolidated approach to advancing the state of planning and planning regulation in our community, leveraging the expertise of its existing staff and augmenting it with additional training, with the expertise also of the folks from AMATS, and harnessing the expertise of the community through its investment and participation in the planning process.
Jared?
I just have, I guess it'd be a point of information, just from my own understanding. I'm not entirely clear on what our obligation is with respect to this work program and what we're, what we're kind of moving towards here on the motion. Is it, is it just kind of a recommendation of acceptance of some sort, or how are we, how is it framed?
I was trying to raise the issue of what are required, what are responsibilities under Title 21, it's 21.02.030C3, and I think I read it before, it says, "Planning and Zoning Commission shall review and make recommendations to the mayor regarding the annual work program of the department." So, to make a recommendation, I think we need a motion, generally, to formalize that. Otherwise, it's just kind of, you know, it's, in my opinion, it's not really a, a recommendation. That's the only reason I suggested that.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Okay, should we vote on that?
I have one more thing to speak. I am going to be supporting the motion, however, I think, since this is going to be passed on the mayor, it is worth noting that a lot of these things, I think one thing that stood out to me in particular was with regards to non-motorized plan, if it's regarding winter maintenance strategies and feasibility of implementation, a lot of it's just going to require funding by the city, and I think it's a matter of getting priorities for, at least in this case, it's a basic safety issue of pedestrians in our municipal area. And so, that if we are really supporting this to the mayor for him, for passing this on, I think we also need to state that in doing so, we're supporting, kind of putting your money where, where your mouth is, and that we need to finance these efforts. If they're going to actually make an impact, we can study these issues and say what's the best thing, but in the end, we're going to have to put money to it, to support it, to see anything out of it. So, that would be something that I think needs to get passed on.
One more finding, that I think the work plan does a very good job of trying to implement the recently adopted 2040 Land Use Plan, and that's obviously the intent of what this work plan revolves around, and I think it's a very good effort in that respect. Okay. Okay, it passes unanimously. All right, a special order business, item three, case 2017-0124, Nordstrom Rack postponement. I have a, I think everybody received a letter from Dow Engineering, on behalf of Saratage Growth Properties, requesting a short time extension to complete the submittal to the Planning and Zoning Commission relative to the detailed outline of the proposed improvements and costs associated with these improvements. And I think this also relates to the conceptual plan we saw at the very end of our meeting, and does anybody care to hear any additional information regarding this? I think the petitioner is representative here. Information, well, I think we sometimes ask for it, but, okay. No questions, and we'll move on. Okay, the consent agenda, I believe we have enough members here that participated in the meetings to entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. There's three resolutions involved. Okay, we've got a, Andre moved, and Danielle seconded. Do you want to vote on that? Okay. Yes, that approved unanimously. All right, we have item E1, unfinished business, it looks like a, need a motion to postpone to January 29th, 18. So, we have Mr. Strike making a motion, Ms. Barker seconding it. Let's vote on that. Okay, that also was approved unanimously. All right, now we come to the public hearing, I don't think there's a lot of public hearing. Yes, five minutes, please, okay, we'll recess for five minutes. Okay, we'll continue the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, January 8th. The, now we're into the public hearing, it doesn't really look like many people out there to testify, but I'll read the public hearing procedure in any case. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedures. Petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes, part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PDAs, et cetera, five minutes, individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendation to the assembly, which is not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Okay, so, hear from staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request to amend a conditional use permit from 1984 for off-street parking in the R4 district. The amendments would add Lot 10 to the already approved conditional use approval for off-street parking. It would change the requirements on fencing and landscaping as well. Watershed Management Services asks for two conditions of approval. The planning department finds that the nine approval criteria for this application are met, and the department's recommending approval of the conditional use amendments, amendments subject to conditions one through five on pages five and six. So, the first condition of approval is a standard condition of approval, that's approving this site plan, I'm sorry, approving this conditional use amendment, subject to the plans sheets that are included in your packet and in their application. The second condition of approval, recorded notice of zoning action, that's a standard condition of approval. Condition number three states declaratively what, you know, other than adding the lot four, what the amendment is for the fence, and then conditions of approval four and five have to do with Watershed Management Services asking for additional details about stormwater runoff and maintenance of the parking lot. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant I know is here with a presentation as well. I'd also just like to make one parting comment, which is, so, why are we here today with this? The, the Chicken Shack Restaurant is going into the Northern Lights Village Mall, and because it was some sort of office space or barber shop, or I don't know what, but they had to apply for a change of use permit and a building permit to do the full-blown restaurant. And it was discovered that they weren't able to count a portion of the easternmost portion of their parking lot, and that was a surprise to the current owner of the mall. And so, they have really diligently... And so they have really diligently worked to bring the whole site into conformance by applying for this amendment, the conditional use permit, to add this missing lot. The department's recommending approval for that. So it was kind of a lot of work in order to formalize that, that lot that had been used for many years as a, decades as a, as a parking lot, but wasn't actually included in the original approval in all of this over a restaurant, because it wouldn't meet the parking requirement without it. Thank you.
Mr. Strike has a question.
Yeah, question to the staff. And just to clarify, that lot was previously used by the same shopping center for parking?
Yes.
Or was it used by another area for parking?
The parking lot and this lot is all under common ownership.
Okay.
And has been used for parking for decades. I think that the petitioner could speak a little bit more to the history of it. It's, going back to 84, we have to make a lot of guesses, but...
And there is no fence that currently bisects Lot 10 from any of the other lots?
It's currently being used as parking, and you'd go and park there and think it's all part of the parking lot. However, it's not...
We'll hear from the petitioner then.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, the recommendation for the four-foot-tall site obscuring fence along the west property boundary, and kind of where that recommendation came from.
Well, the original approval required a solid wood fence, and that is not there any longer. What is there is a six-foot-tall chain link fence with the slats. And our current code doesn't require any sort of fencing at all. The preferred method is landscaping, but this was approved legally, and it's just that the rules have changed since then. The existing fence seems to be functioning fine at screening. The department's recommending just a minimum of a four-foot fence. The six-foot fence is fine, but, you know, creating walls doesn't seem like really necessary. It seems if the purpose is to block the headlights of the vehicles, then they could accomplish that with a four-foot-tall screening fence. So, and the, the chain link fence seems to have held up better than the wood fence did for however long it was there.
I have, I have a question. So you're keeping the four-foot fence on the west side, but you're not requiring the fence on the east side, which is part of the original resolution. The west side doesn't have any, is vacant, right? And the east side has apartment. So I don't understand why fences require on the west side, but not on the east side, if, if, if that's helpful in preventing lights from entering the...
The east side is facing another parking lot, constructed parking lot that serves the, the apartment building.
Okay, so the parking...
It's parking, facing parking.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that, then I didn't see, and there's a fence there. We don't know who owns it, but it just didn't seem necessary to have, because current code doesn't require any fence. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, open the public hearing. Petitioner, may I speak? You have 10 minutes.
My name is Bree Keifer, and I'll be representing NLVLC. My name's Bree Keifer, and I'll be representing NLVLC, spelling B-R-I, first name, and then last name, K-E-I-F-E-R. So Mr. McLaughlin touched on a lot of the background of the property, but I'll just recap some of the things to clear up some of the questions. So like he said, the Northern Lights Village was originally developed in the mid-'80s. And at that time, the two buildings were constructed, along with the parking lot in the back, which are on tracks one through four and zoned R4, and that's why the conditional use was required at the time and approved. The adjacent lot to the east was not part of that conditional use, but over time was cleared. And from aerials, it looks like it was used for parking, snow storage, vehicle storage. And so the current owner has continued to maintain it as a parking lot. So moving forward, in order to keep using it as parking, that's why we're requesting this amendment. And the current uses in the buildings would require 84 parking stalls. There are only 75 parking stalls on tracks one through four, and adding parking on Lot 10 would add an additional 15, so bringing the property to 90 parking stalls. That would meet the 84 parking stall requirement and then have some additional parking in case a new use came in and that required a higher parking ratio. To speak to the change from perimeter fencing to just fencing on the west side, the reason will be is that on the east property line, they did require fencing. Instead of adding fencing to meet the 84 standard, we're going to be upgrading it to current code. So that will include six shrubs every 20 feet and making sure there are sufficient trees. And there's actually mature trees on the east property that meet current code. And then that's the same for the north side. Instead of requiring a fence there, which they would have to install, we're going to be installing current Title 21 landscaping. So overall, by allowing parking on this lot, it will be reducing potential impacts of parking to the surrounding neighbors and to 27th Avenue, and then also provides better business opportunities for the two buildings. And with that, I'm just going to leave it open to questions and response.
Ms. Bailey?
I was wondering if you were okay with the five proposed conditions of approval that the staff recommended?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner?
Well, I think you largely answered my question, but I just, I think if I'm reading the application correctly, it looks like you're asking for, the proposal is for an opaque fence on the west boundary? And I thought I understood that the, I guess, is that the same as site obscuring?
Mm-hmm.
If that makes sense. Answers that for me? Thank you.
Point of information, let me just flip to the fences, if I, if I can. There's maybe as many as four different types of fences or definitions of fences, and I think that Ms. Keifer intended to say a screening fence, but the application does say an opaque fence. Opaque fence is a complete blackout, you know, privacy fence, such as a solid wood fence. The current fence that's there is a screening fence, because per the definition, it's something like 25% of the light is allowed through, or something like that. So the slats makes it a screening fence. And so I was just using, and it's, it's so complicated, but I was trying to use the term that is accurate for the type of fence that is there presently. And I double-checked that with my colleagues.
Ms. Barker?
So just to clarify, site obscuring is the term of art? Because that's what's in the conditions. That's not quite what I heard you say. I'm confused. In condition number three on page six of the handout?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, yes, through the chair, Ms. Barker, thank you. Okay, so fence, there's open, there's fence, open fence, ornamental fence, screening opaque fence, semi-open fence, site obscuring fence. And site obscuring fence, a fence constructed such that less than 25% of the visual image of light may be seen through the fence. Openings in such fences shall not exceed 25% in any one square foot of vertical, and it goes on. But the point is, is that the fence that's there seems to be working fine, and they're not upgrading it to current landscaping standard. They're just leaving it in place. And if they're going to leave that fence, then site obscuring is, of which is in the conditions of approval, is the way we want it. If you wanted them to put in opaque fence, then they'd have to tear that down and start fresh. And we wanted to avoid that.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions to the petitioner?
I...
Oh, sorry, Craig?
I do, I do. I'm trying to reconcile here. Condition number three, the parking area shall have a minimum of four-foot-tall site obscuring fence along the west property boundary. No other fences are required. Is there any fence currently on the east side?
There is a fence, but we believe it belongs to the adjacent property owner. It goes back and forth over the property line, so, I mean, the current owner didn't put it in, and it looks like it could belong to the, the other property owner.
Well, I'm just concerned by the condition. Does this condition supersede any prior conditions for this site? And therefore, if the other owner decides to take that fence down, they're still in compliance?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike. If the commission approves the department's recommendation, then everything will be copacetic. The fence doesn't, they're, they're upgrading the north side of the parking lot and the east side of the parking lot to current code requirements, and doing away with the specific landscape standard approved in 1984 and the fence requirement approved in 1984.
So as, as submitted, no fencing along the...
That's correct.
...east side...
Yes.
...is required, so we'll have whatever, so no landscaping. Help me out.
Current Title 21 landscaping will be added. So we will be adding shrubs along the east property line, and the existing trees meet current code, so we'll be maintaining those.
But it is the east side that has the apartments. It's the east side that has the other parking area for that apartment.
So we'll be upgrading the landscaping to meet current landscaping requirements.
And is, is part of that landscaping, it's also, the fencing is also to prevent cars from moving in between the two lots instead of using the driveway. This whole area gets so congested with traffic, and people are looking for shortcuts and ways around. You've got snow, you've got snow issues when the snow builds up and it piles up against the fence. That's why the wooden fence is no longer there. You used to pile the snow up against the fence, and it deteriorated the fence. So you went to a chain link, and you went to the other piece. I guess I'm just, I'm missing something that says that we're not looking for any, we're relying on the landscaping only on the east side to buffer the two lots.
Yes, so the original, the original CUP was four tracks, one through four, and at the time, they required fencing to provide screening. Lot 10 was not a part of that CUP, but Lot 10 will be, because it's being developed now under current code, we're making sure that it meets current code standards. And an R4, abutting an R4, or a parking lot, needs perimeter landscaping, and that perimeter landscaping will consist of shrubs that maintain an 18-inch or taller height, and then, and then mature trees. So the current landscape code is what we're designing to meet.
Have you had any feedback from the owner of the adjacent property?
We did not receive any specific feedback.
Is it your intent to remove the fence that's currently there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to the petitioner? How much rebuttal? Seven minutes rebuttal time, if you choose. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify? I didn't think so. Unless you're hiding down there somewhere. I have a question of the petitioner, I mean, the staff, if I may. I'm a little confused about this conditional use. This is just, I guess, more of a technical issue. It says an amendment to a conditional use for off-street parking in the R4, and the location's mentioned is Block, Bittner subdivision, Block 3, Lot 10. Seems to me that there's a resolution for conditional use for tracks one through four, and based on what I read of the resolution, there's some substantial changes to the original conditional use. Shouldn't there be some mention or reference to lots, tracks one through four in this staff report as far as the, what, what we're actually amending? We're actually amending, it seems like we're actually amending tracks one through four, the conditional use of parking, and we're actually doing a new conditional use for Lot 10, because Lot 10 was not part of the original conditional use. You can't make an amendment to a parcel that didn't have a previous conditional use, right? If you could clarify that, I don't understand exactly. It's a complicated one, but it seems, or is it?
Yeah, through the chair, the, this is an application to amend the original 1984 conditional use to add an additional lot. And that additional lot will be fully Title 21 compliant with current code. The rest of the parking lot can stay with its original approval, but they've chosen to upgrade the north property boundary with site perimeter parking lot landscaping.
Should it reference one through four in the staff report?
Uh, uh, no...
Or will the resolution of approval indicate that it's, one through four is included in it?
No, I don't believe so, Mr. Chair. This, the first condition of approval is that it approves this amendment's subject to all of the, the plans in your packet. And the plans specify every tree and shrub, every location for fencing, every, there's a fully developed site plan for the parking lot. It's approving, what you would be approving tonight are the plans, that drawing, and that's the drawing that, you know, we've described it in words and discussed it here, but you're approving, what we described is in the drawing form here, and that's, that's the site plan, that's the conditional use, that's the site plan that you're approving tonight. If you...
But it will reference, the resolution will reference tracks one through four as an amended conditional use.
I'd be happy to write that into the resolution.
Well, because that's included in the site plan. But then, just, I don't want to extend this any further. Seems to me it doesn't, it's a bad policy to amend a conditional use and add a whole new parcel. I mean, that could lead, like, the gates wide open, couldn't it, to all kinds of abuse? I mean, if you, you have a conditional use of any conditional use, and you want to buy another parcel, add it to the conditional use and build on it, and you could call it a, an amended conditional use, or, that doesn't seem like a...
Mr. Chair?
Proper procedure.
This is a, you know, a public hearing that was publicly advertised. The applicant had a community meeting under the new code. This is just sort of a discussion about terminology, because they have gone through everything that is required of a new conditional use. This is called a major amendment, not, or, an amendment to the conditional use, it's not a minor amendment. That's the way the new code's, like, terminology is. And so, yeah, I just don't share your view that this is open to some sort of abuse.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. I doubt the floodgates are open when you're publicly noticed and have a public testimony.
Okay. Ms.?
If I'm understanding what you said properly, we're really looking about Lot 10. That's the issue at hand. But the petitioner has voluntarily indicated that they will add renewed landscaping on the...
North side.
The north side. That, that's what's happening?
Yes, through the chair, Ms. Barker, that the new lot that's added won't be going under 1984 sort of standards. It'll be fully code compliant with the, with the new code, which is an expensive upgrade. The north side of the parking lot, as you said, will also be code compliant on the landscaping along...
But they're doing that voluntarily?
Correct. They could instead say, no, we're just going to place a solid wood, four-foot-high site obscuring fence. But that is not in anyone's real interest, because fencing around parking lots facing roads, it could lead to problems of people hiding behind fences and safety, or, or it's just not, maybe not as pretty. We know that the fence, the, the wood fences... We know that, that the fence, the, the wood fences maybe aren't as durable over time. The landscaping seems to be the preferred method for perimeter buffering.
Well, it has a lot of dangers. I'm very familiar with...
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Just trying to get to the intent there. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
This is kind of separate from the case we're hearing today. I think how it was handled was good, and I'll be, if a motion is proposed, I'll be supporting it. Just in general, in areas like this where parking congestion is kind of a problem, it'd be interesting to see if staff is able to look into parking lot sharing options. I don't think it was necessary here, since this is an area that's always been used for parking, but that might be interesting to see, and specifically in this area, since it has such big problems, and maybe some other areas where businesses are coming into south addition. It would be fun to see if there are some kind of strategies there to not create large lots of parking, but to encourage businesses to share. However, I don't think it will impact my decision on this vote today, but it's just something that I wanted to make sure to remember.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, we're prepared to make a motion. Sorry, close to public hearing. Thank you. Go ahead and do it again, please. Okay, Ms. Bailey, I'm moved. Second, Mr. Gardner? Yeah?
First, as a point of order, would the, would the petitioner have a chance to make a rebuttal?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Okay. There was a, thank you. Okay. How much time we got? Seven minutes? You have seven minutes if you'll choose to use it.
Mr. McLaughlin addressed a lot of the questions that I think came up, so no rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're ready for a motion.
I would move to approve the amendment to a commission, conditional use for off-street parking in the R4 district, subject to the five staff conditions listed in the packet.
Okay, Mr. Gardner seconded it. I'd like to speak to your motion.
Yes. I think that this meets the requirements of AMC 21 dot zero three dot zero eight zero D. Specifically, it's very consistent with the intent of the area. They aren't really changing this. This is some, it's directly abutting to a parking lot that is connected, that has been used for, I think, longer than I've been Alaska, and possibly longer than I've been alive, if I get the dates right. It also seems to be doing a good job of not only updating the one lot that they're improving, but the entire lots to Title 21 standards. And I also note that they did outreach with the community council, and it does not appear that they did a vote on it, but it seems that the community council was generally in favor. And so it seems as though the petitioner, in this case, seemed to go above and beyond in trying to make sure that what was a technical misuse of the property is now being used appropriately and being updated, so it's a better member of the community.
Any other comments? Findings? Okay, Mr. Strike?
Yes, as a finding, I would note that only one public hearing comment was received, written format, to the notice, and that while it was against any additional parking, I believe that it was not on point to the request, but there was only one comment received.
Okay, very good. All right, are we prepared to vote? Looks like that's approved unanimously. Okay, that's the end of the public hearings. I have one, one thing to ask the Commission real quick, and involves Citizen Advisory Committee to AMATS. I got an email requesting whether I wanted to continue as a Citizen Advisory Committee member, and I thought I should ask the Commission if I, for approval. Yeah, thanks, okay. You're, you're missing out on a lot of fun. It's, the fate of the city is involved here with, whatever. Okay, motion to adjourn, please.